Under the 22nd meeting of the Mayor and City Council, meeting in regular session on Monday, November 24th, 2014. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. The President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak for each agenda item. We will now have the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Mo.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, we will remember Charlie Donaldson, who is in Laurel Eastern Hospital. He's part of the history of this city. Almighty God, we gather this evening hour, you can get the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our President, for our Mayor, for the members of the City Council, and for all in authority, render to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties on behalf of all thy people. We commend this nation, our armed forces, our fine rescue, our law enforcement community, their merciful care and keeping. We ask, O Lord, that you will remember those who lie upon the bed of affliction, comfort those who mourn the wants of loved ones, in the name of the one whose Lord of life we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ral, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Laz?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Mo.
Agenda item five. Second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1815, text amendment number 236. An ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article One, Zoning, Division Five, Zoning Districts of the Laurel City Code, providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Ms. Pulli?
Good evening. Text amendment application number 236 was filed on October 7th, 2014, to amend Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article One, Zoning Division Five, Zoning Districts of the Laurel City Code, to allow tobacco retail and smoking lounges as a special exception in the CG Commercial General Zone, CSH Commercial Shopping Zone, and a CV Village Zone, providing an effective date on October 30th, 2014. The proposed ordinance in cover letter, request and comments, was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning. A response dated October 31st, 2014, was received, saying that the Maryland Department of Planning did not have any objection to the proposed ordinance. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law in the November 6th, 2014 edition of the Prince George's Centennial. On November 18th, 2014, the City of Laurel Planning Commission meeting in regular session reviewed the draft amended ordinance and expressed concerns about the proposed ordinance. On motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Wilford, and carried on a roll for vote of all members present, the Planning Commission recommended that the Mayor and City Council deny text amendment application number 236. The file contains a memo to the Mayor and City Council from the Department of Community Planning and Business Services, dated November 19th, 2014, regarding staff's review of the Planning Commission concerns and the resulting edits to the proposed ordinance. The memo reads as follows. On October 7th, 2014, Ms. Sharon Harris, 9044 Gorman Road, Laurel, Maryland 20723, submitted an application to amend the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code in order to permit retail with smoking lounge and the CG Commercial General, CSH Commercial Shopping Center, and CV Commercial Village as a special exception. On November 18th, 2014, the Planning Commission meeting in regular session reviewed the draft amended ordinance, recommended that the Mayor and City Council deny text amendment 236, ordinance number 1815. The Planning Commission in discussion expressed concerns, proposed ordinance conditions as follow: 18-year-old patrons, the legal age to purchase tobacco, having access to alcohol, which requires the customers to be 21 years of age. How will the city monitor that no more than 20% of sales is for prepackaged snacks? As written, there is no limitation on the number of live performance by bands or other performing group. Staff met and discussed the Planning Commission's concerns and makes the following recommended changes to the retail sales with smoking lounge text amendment. Retail sales of cigars flavored tobacco, hookahs and accessories. Hookah seshat is a water pipe used to smoke tea, herbs, and other flavored tobacco. It can have a single or multiple holes and tips to share among a group. A retail store and smoking lounge is subject to the following conditions. All lounge patrons must be at... All lounge patrons and occupants must be at age 21 or older. Smoking lounge can only sell prepackaged snacks such as chips and nuts, no on-site food preparation. Live performance by a band and other performing group permitted, no dancing allowed. Performance is limited to two events per month. The business owner shall give written notice seven days prior to the event to the Department of Planning and Business, Community Planning and Business Services. The notice shall include the banner group in order for the Laurel Police Department to determine security measures. The recommended changes have not been reviewed by the Planning Commission, but were forwarded to the Planning Commission and are submitted to the Mayor and City Council for consideration. A copy of the November 19th, 2014 memorandum was sent to all members. This concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pulli. I will open a public hearing at 7:07. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:07. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Councilman Ricks?
I move for the adoption of text amendment 236, ordinance 1815, with the following amendment, and that is in paragraph one, page two, that should read, "All lounge patrons and occupants must be of 21 years of age."
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the ordinance, or the text amendment as amended? Seeing none, Ms. Ral, please call the roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mo?
Agenda item two is consideration of a recommendation for a contract extension for LA 13-03 to LCCI Construction Management for Bridge Repairs at Dorset Road. Let me modify that agenda a bit. Let's go to agenda item three first. Ordinance number 1824, an ordinance to amend certain budgets in the FY 2015 through FY 2020 Capital Improvement Program. Ms. Saylor?
Mr. President, as we discussed at the earlier work session, this ordinance closes out the completed street projects of Woodruff Court, Lotus Court, and Hyacinth Court, and transfers the remaining funds to the bridge repairs project for the cell, the storm cell repair on Dorset Road, as well as funding, some funding for Dorset Road improvements.
Okay, so ordinance 1824 provides the funding for the Dorset Road project. I'll open a public hearing at 7:10. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:10. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President?
Councilman Laz?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ral, please call the roll.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Now, Mr. Furey, we'll go back to agenda item two.
No. We gotta pass the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm really ahead of myself. Now, Councilman Laz, I'll entertain your motion to pass the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance number 1824, an ordinance to amend certain budgets in the FY 2015, FY 2020 Capital Improvement Program.
Councilman Ricks, will you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ral, please call the roll.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mo?
Okay, well, now move to agenda item two. Consideration of a recommendation for a contract extension for LA 13-03 to LCCI Construction Management for Bridge Repairs at Dorset Road. Mr. Furey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Public Works is looking to extend their contract to do stormwater improvement along Dorset Road, which would change the cells that are falling apart with concrete collars, flumes, fencing, and riprap. We're planning on doing a public hearing on this action over at Partnership Hall on December 10th at 7:00 p.m. Funding for this project has just been put into the FY 15 CIP in the amount of $110,000. It's recommended that we go ahead and award this extension to LCCI for the $110,000, thus saving us about $40,000 in engineering costs. And I have to keep in mind that during this construction, there will probably be some temporary road closures in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Furey. We discussed this at our work session earlier. I will first, though, open the public hearing at 7:14. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:14. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
I recommend that we approve the LCCI Construction Contract Extension, and the bridge repairs is set forth on Dorset Road by Mr. Furey.
We have the motions there, a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'll note that because we're dealing with pulling up pipes, as we discussed at the work session, that within the parameters established for the mayor, in case of an emergency, you can expend up to $35,000 more if Mr. Furey's contractor should find some hidden problems underneath the pipes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Laz? Ms. Ral, please call the roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Mayor?
Rob, do you, once counsel's approved, you have a timeline? We gonna try to do that before the end of the year?
Yes, I talked into the contractor today. It'll take him about two to three weeks to get the pipe, and he'll do some prep work and get started on it right away.
And there will be road closures, and we want to make sure everybody understands that area's gonna be a little difficult getting through for a while.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor? I've kind of jumped around this agenda, so I'm gonna move back up to agenda item six, and that's approval of the minutes. We'll defer those minutes until the December 8th meeting. Agenda item seven is a report of the Mayor and City Council. Start at my left with Councilwoman Crary.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the 11th, with my council colleagues and the mayor, we opened the new Harris Teeter here in town to a very large crowd. In addition to that, on the 13th, we had the principal's breakfast right here in this room, and that was initiated by the mayor, and we'd keep track of all the schools here in town and the surrounding area and their issues, and also update them on what's going on. The grand opening of the Town Center was on the 15th, and I'm sure some of you attended. Congratulations to Greenberg Gibbons and Samara, and the mayor, and this council. Long time coming, but very enjoyable to all of us in the City of Laurel, and congratulations to them, too. This Thursday will be Lars having their 10th Annual 5K. It'll be a walk-run. It's a worthy cause. I hope everyone comes out and supports them. And this Saturday will be Small Business Saturday, and I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crary. Councilwoman Nicholas?
In addition to attending the Town Center celebrations, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving.
Councilman Ricks?
Excuse me, echo what I've heard reported at the Town Center's openings. I attended those. I also attended on the 13th, the principal's breakfast, and on the 12th, the Greens of Attucks and Homeowners Association meeting. I also attended the grand opening of the Regal Theaters, which is very, very nice. And I also attended at Trees at the Town Center and the lighting for the particular evening on the 22nd, and I'd like to also send out prayers to Michael Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Councilman Laz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The November 12th, I attended the Attucks River Commission meeting in Annapolis. As you've heard, we've attended a couple of, actually attended two homeowner association meetings on the 12th and the 13th, and I encourage any homeowner association to invite us to come. We'd be glad to come and answer what questions we can. If we can't, we'll get you the answer. The Town Center Laurel Grand Opening is important because of the loss of tax revenue that the city has experienced over the last 10 years. We went down to one-tenth of what we used to get in tax revenue, and as the quarter year assessments kick in and the so on for the different opening UNOs that are granted, we'll see that increase. I'd like to remind our citizens that we have an anti-dumping ordinance here in our city. If you observe someone that appears to be dumping by offloading tires, mattresses, furniture, or bags of trash, next to trash cans, dumpsters, or vacant property, please note the tag number and call the Laurel Police Department, not emergency number 301-498-0092. Well wishes go out to Mrs. Virginia Skaggle-Raney. Hopefully, she'll be home soon. Finally, I'd like to wish all of our citizens and their families a very happy and safe Thanksgiving weekend. Please drive carefully. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Laz. Like my colleagues, I had the opportunity to attend a number of events, including the homeowner association meeting at Conti Crossing. And as Councilman Laz mentioned, any homeowner associations that would like us as council members to come out and talk about things that are going on in the city, listen to their concerns, and provide some responses, we're always available and more than happy to do that. I had the opportunity, at the invitation of our District One School Board Representative, Sabrina Epps, to attend a town hall meeting at Martin Luther King Middle School. The town hall meeting brought together public officials as well as parents, teachers, and others to talk about some of the issues that were going on at Martin Luther King, and I'm happy to say that after hearing many of the concerns that were raised by the folks who were there, there were some very positive outcomes that will come out of that meeting, so we're looking forward to seeing some changes and improvements at Martin Luther King. You've heard my colleagues mention, and anyone who has driven around the city knows that the Town Center is open, and it's, from all indications, doing quite well. You've heard us mention, the mayor, Councilman Ricks, and others mention jobs in the Town Center, and that's a very, very big deal. I happened to go to the movie theater for the first time yesterday with my 12-year-old grandson, and as we were standing at the concession stand, I asked the young lady who was helping me, I asked her, I said, "You go to Laurel High School?" And she said, "Yes." And I says, "What do you think about this?" And she was very pleased. She's happy to have a job. As a high school student, as I looked down the row of all the young people who were there working, the Town Center and all the businesses there have really reached out to our community and provided jobs for a lot of young people in our community, obviously not just young people, but certainly if you go to any of the new businesses in the Town Center, you'll see a number of youth working in those establishments, and that's a great thing for this community. I'll also just end by wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and don't overeat.
Do you know the date of the tree lighting at the hospital?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me give well wishes to Mary Blankenship in our communications department, who had some surgery. Wish her the very best, speedy recovery. As you've heard, the grand opening ribbon cutting celebration at the Town Center, and then Regal Theaters, Harris Teeters, and other, want to thank Brian Gibbons in particular for the hard work he's done to make that possible. They're not done, as he stated numerous times, and I think you'll see some other exciting things happening in the, hopefully, the first of the year. The tree lighting at Laurel Center, let me thank Councilman Ricks for attending and taking care of that. I told you we had thousands of people there, and went by. Looked very nice, but while we celebrate Thursday, don't forget about our tree lighting and parade that will take place in the City of Laurel. The 27th and 28th, city offices will be closed. Check schedule for trash recycling pickup. Also, a couple of announcements. The tree dedication that we'll be holding for Eric Hoagland, who was a former member of the Department of Park and Rec Citizens Advisory Committee, will be held on the 29th at McCullough Field from 10:30 to 11:00. The public is invited if we want to honor his memory in placing a tree at McCullough Field. On December the 4th, the U.S. Army Field Band Concert will play at the Laurel High School from 7:30 to 9:00 at the Laurel Boy de Trey. We want to thank them for their hard work. No? No? Stand by. We'll let them talk about that. It's in my notes. Could be a cancellation. December the 5th is the Laurel Thrift Store Center and Amets Department of Maryland Annual Holiday Awards Program that they recognize. Several of the city departments here will be taking part in that at 7:00, which is at 7:00 until 9:00. On December the 6th, the Laurel Police Department is partnering with St. Mark's United Methodist Church and the local chapter of Prince George County NAACP for a guns-for-gift cards exchange. It'll be held at St. Mark's on December the 6th from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. On December the 6th, as I stated a moment ago, the holiday parade, tree lighting, building lighting, doing the building some. Fifth and Montgomery, the Anderson Murphy Community Center will take place from 5:30 until 7:30, and might contact your office, contact Department of Park and Recs if you'd like to participate in that. It's usually a very good turnout, and we would hope, again, this year, we have another good turnout. I've got a lot of exciting things planned for that on December the 6th from 5:30 to We are collecting food at most city buildings. You'll see a box, you'll see one out in the lobby, as well as toys for tots. We're partnering again with St. Mark's United Methodist Church, where you can drop off toys. The turkey trot, as you heard Councilmember Crary talk about, the 5K run and fun walk. All proceeds support Lars, and the registration's at 7:00 a.m. on the 27th at Fifth and Main I do, Mr. President, I want to, I have two proclamations. I want to thank you. I know tonight, at the end of the agenda, there'll be possibly election of a new president. I want to thank you for your support, thank you for your leadership, and look forward to working with whoever the next president will be. So again, thank you, and congratulations to you for a good year. I am very concerned, if you watch the meetings, we've had different text amendments, some zoning issues, some other things that have required council to take some actions, as well as the staff, to do some research. You know, I'm gonna be talking to Mr. Manzi. I'm gonna see if there's a way that we can help alleviate some of that problem. I know that our growth plan that we're required to do by state law, we need to get that moving as well. So we're gonna come up with some ideas. We'll come back to the council with some ideas on how we think the best way to proceed, so we're not rushed, and that we're taking, being responsible when we talk about our zoning and land use. The, I'll do these after the proclamations. I got some appointments. I do have two proclamations that I would like to read. The first is proclamation 1421, whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, Black Friday, and Cyber Monday, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a collaboration of a unique blend of partnerships, charities, families, businesses, and individuals to transform how people think, what people think about, talk about, and participate in the giving season. And whereas Giving Tuesday encourages all to be generous in whatever way and manner, whether it means volunteering at a local charity or donating to a favorite cause and building a better community. Now, therefore, I, Craig A. Mo, the Mayor and City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim December the 2nd, 2014, as Giving Tuesday, and urge all citizens to participate in celebration either by volunteering or donating. Joe, I'm told you're coming up? Joe Murchison? Okay. Joe Murchison, you can introduce your author. Present this to Jojo's, what's your title there? Chairman?
Executive Director.
This way. Put this so you can, executive director, side by side, and I'll let you speak and introduce. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. This is Katie Meitzner, who is working with our nonprofit to organize community support through Giving Tuesday.
We thank you for offering us this proclamation. We are very excited about Giving Tuesday. Just a reminder, as you said, it's a way of kind of reclaiming the holiday season and bringing it back towards giving and not just going out and spending. So we are very excited for Giving Tuesday, and we are very excited for the impact that any donations will have on our organization and the work that we do for Prince George's County Public Schools. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So you don't have to wait till Tuesday, Joe, and then we'll take checks in the back if you want to donate a little money. They do great work side by side, so thank you all very much for what you continue to do. Next is proclamation 1417, whereas the City of Laurel anticipates our local small, appreciates our local small businesses and contributes, although my eyes need to get focused for a second. You better get good glasses. Whereas the City of Laurel appreciates local small businesses for their contributions they make to the local economy and to the community, whereas it is important for people to support small businesses they value in their community. Whereas the City of Laurel supports our local businesses because they create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And now, there are, for I, Craig A. Mo, the Mayor and City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November the 29th, 2014, as Small Business Saturday, in the City of Laurel, and urge all Laurel citizens to celebrate by spending some money on small business. Who's gonna come up? Oh, y'all, come on up. Any small business, come on up here. I'm sure Matthew will say something, and Bernie, and Lori, and anybody else that's out there that wants to speak. Should I give you the mic first? Bernie's going.
Small Business Saturday is a very important element to the small business. Folks don't realize on Main Street, there were, in the past few years, it was 25 business, new businesses that opened up on Main Street. So we're asking you guys not just to come to the mall, but come to Main Street also because we have a lot to offer. As a matter of fact, the new mall is actually partnering with us this weekend to make sure that they're giving out coupons and stuff to come out on the streets, so we're appreciative of you continuing to support small business and come out on Main Street. Street. Stop, shop, Main Street, we appreciate it, thank you.
I also want to thank the City of Laurel and the citizens of Laurel for assisting us with improving Main Street, as well as the greater city in general. The city has been kind enough to allocate additional personnel resources, Alicia's doing a great job going around to different businesses and facilitating communication. We meet with the Mayor monthly, he's very sharing and very wise with his recommendations. This is a city and town that works together. There's a lot of pride in Main Street Laurel, and I think you'll be seeing differences, we've been working on it already, just spiffing things up a little bit more, making it nicer for the community, and trying to share that gem that's in our backyard, the riverfront block as well.
Laurel's been great, been in the real estate business, all the improvements of Laurel have helped us sell a lot of homes, and help with property values, and as a testament of not just having houses, but strong school systems, as well as a business, and it all works together hand in hand. I will also be running into 5K Trot on Thursday, so I'll be getting up, hope to see other people out there, will support the Laurel's Foundation, so thank you.
The Laurel Board of Trade is small business, big ideas.
We do apologize for the Army Field Band that was scheduled. The dates got screwed up with the Army Field Band in the Laurel High School, so that's going to be rescheduled for sometime in the spring, so look for that new date coming up in the spring for that. Thank you.
Let me again acknowledge and thank the Board of Trade for the many, many things that they do in this community, and appreciate them being here tonight, hopefully another small business will be coming down on Main Street as well, a few others, and want to remind those that, and again, thank the council, because this would not have been possible. We do have our grant program that we have, and we've committed other resources, and we can only do that because of members of the council that support small business, especially the Main Street area. And again, I think what happens at the Town Center will only help Main Street and other businesses. So thank you all for coming out, and thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, let me conclude my report by making a couple reappointments to some committees and commissions. Maggie Chenault, the Board of Appeals, Marlene Collins, Board of Appeals, Kimberly Parker, Board of Appeals, the alternate, they would be 11/2414 to 11/2417. Jim Hester, Jim is here with us tonight, Jim has been very involved, and want to thank him for his support as Chairman of the Ethics Commission. Jim would be, and Tony Drake as well, reappointment to the Ethics Commission, they'd be 11/2414 to 11/2417. Bobby McSiney, Barbara Bosher, and Patsy Fattis to the Tree Board, they'd be 11/2414 to 11/2416. Mike McLaughlin, the Environmental Affairs, 11/2414 to 11/2416. Calvin Parks, the Emergency Services Commission, 11/2414, 11/2417. And Ben Gray, to the Park and Recs CAC, 11/2414, 11/2416. Now, I might add, the Park and Recs CAC, did we move that out? Then we moved, yeah, so we're going to make those appointments, as you're well aware, we made some changes, that'll be done by executive board, but we wanted to make that appointment to you tonight. We'd ask for your confirmation.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We all know this defined work that these individuals do and have done, what's your pleasure?
Vote for approval, Mr. President.
Thank the Councilman Les, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Ralph, please call and roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move to Agenda Eight, General Public Hearing. I'll open the General Public Hearing at 7:35. I have no one signed up to speak for the General Public Hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the General Public Hearing at 7:35. We'll move down to Agenda Item 11, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1819, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Employee Retirement Plan to extend the Deferred Retirement Option Plan. I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open a public hearing at 7:36. I have no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:36. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, move for adoption of Ordinance Number 1819.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Ms. Ralph, please call for the vote.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda Item 12 is a Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1820, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Police Retirement Plan to extend the Deferred Retirement Option Plan. I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:38. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:38, and I'll entertain a motion from council.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crary?
I move to approve Ordinance Number 1820, as read into the record.
Thank you, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call and roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda Item 13 is a Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1821, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Employee Retirement Plan as it relates to interest accruals on participant contributions. I read the title into the record for the second reading, I'll open a public hearing at 7:39. I have no one signed up to speak for this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:39. Council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President, move for adoption of 1821.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks, thank you, Councilwoman Crary, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call and roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda Item 14 is a Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1822, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Police Retirement Plan as it relates to interest accruals on participant contributions. I read the title into the record for the second reading, I'll open a public hearing at 7:40. I have no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:40. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, move for the adoption of Ordinance 1822.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call and roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda Item 15 is a Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1823, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. I read the title into the record for the second reading, I'll open a public hearing at 7:41. I have no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:41. Council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President, move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 1823, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
Thank you, Councilman Les, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call and roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda Item 16 is a Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Resolution Number 13-14, a resolution to set the polling locations for regular voting in the City of Laurel for the general election on Tuesday, November 3, 2015. I read the title into the record for the second reading, I'll open a public hearing at 7:42. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:42. Council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
I recommend that we approve Resolution Number 13-14, as read into the record.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call and roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda Item 17 is the Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Resolution Number 14-14, a resolution to set the dates, times, and polling locations for early voting in the City of Laurel for the general election on Tuesday, November 3, 2015. I read the title into the record for the second reading, I'll open a public hearing at 7:43. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:43. Council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
I recommend that we approve Resolution Number 1414, as read into the record concerning early voting in the City of Laurel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call and roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda Item 18 is the election of the President, and I will pass this gavel to Ms. Ralph.
Thank you. The floor is now open for nominations for council president.
Ms. Crary?
I nominate Councilmember Edward Ricks.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination by Ms. Crary, seconded by Mr. Smalls. I'm now going to call the roll. Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
First of all, let me thank everyone for their support, this is a great honor, I've been this chair before, and it always served me well, and I tried to serve the city well. I want to thank Mr. Smalls, Fred Smalls, for all his support, Mayor Moe, for your support. I think, Fred, you've done an excellent job for the last two years, I think you probably need a rest, but nevertheless, on behalf of myself, and I'd like to also thank the rest of the council for their support, on behalf of our whole team, we'd like to present you with this.
Should I open this now or put it under my tree?
Open it.
No, you open it now.
Let me say a couple of words before I do, because the paper and voice just won't work well. It's been a real pleasure serving as president for this council for two years. I've learned a lot, and I will certainly continue to learn a lot from each one of you. We still have a lot of work to do, obviously, but I just want to say I have a tremendous amount of respect for each one of you, and mayor included. And I just look forward to us continuing along the path that we have, and we do it because I feel our hearts are in the right place, and that is serving the residents and businesses of this city. I think it's pretty evident as you move about this city, the work that the city government has done, not just us as elected folks, but every one of the people who are sitting over here along the dais and their staffs all make us who are sitting up here look good. So, you know, I thank everyone for it, I'm not going away, I'll still be here, I'll continue to, you know, raise my voice when needed, but I appreciate it. I'll turn the mic off and open.
While you're doing that, Fred, I'd like to recognize my two brothers, Ronnie and Robert, that are in the audience, my good friend Brian, and Josh, and James. Thank you all for coming out, as well as the rest of you.
Saw this thing, a pair of sneakers. Wow.
I would never buy you sneakers.
Outstanding plot.
Thank you very much.
With that, the meeting is adjourned. Oh, excuse me, I knew I'd make a mistake. I'd like to announce that I'm going to ask Donna Crary to be my pro tem. With that, we're adjourned.